Good morning. Happy New Year. The Board of Appeal for January 9th is now in session. Just a reminder, make sure your cellphones are off. And please take all conversations that you may want to have outside of the room. The acoustics in here are not good. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition of a project, please put your name and address on the record. We are here to gather new information, so if somebody has already stated your concern or something that you're in support of, just put your name and address on the record. We're here to gather as much new information as possible, and that would be very helpful to us. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being As a board, we would like to thank Val for all the work she's done in supporting the staff, in supporting the board, and all getting the notices out and everything. So Val, thank you so much.
Val.
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business, the approval of the hearing minutes of November 28th, 2017, and November 16th of 2017, so we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first case for extension, calling BOA 331-583-119 to 327 Chelsea Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, this is approved by the Board for the construction of a 38-unit residential structure in East Boston. The current extension expires, I believe, in March. We are in the process of completing the first phase of this project, which is to relocate the existing funeral home that's located at that site. Once that is complete, we can begin construction in earnest. We're ready with financing and with permits, so we would need an extension of the time.
One year?
One year will be fine.
I believe it's April.
That's possibly correct.
Yeah. I'll make a motion for one-year extension.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 450-351, 1181 to 1183 Bennington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, this was also approved by the Board some time back for 44 residential units in the Orient Heights section of East Boston. This project is also just about ready to go. There is some environmental cleanup that's ongoing. Once that is concluded, we'll be ready to pull permits and proceed.
Madam Chair, make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 382-897-104 Canal Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ruth Sulman with Nixon Peabody, representing Somnaf Hospitality. This is for a proposed hotel at 104 Canal Street for 90 guestrooms. The original relief was granted in February of 2015. Last year, we were here and obtained a one-year extension. We're seeking a further one-year extension. The owner is in discussions with various hotels to get a "flag," quote-unquote, for the hotel. They were very close. The deal fell through. They're still negotiating. They're, again, very close, and there was also some environmental assessments that needed to be done at the property before they could convince a hotel.
Is this the second extension?
This is the second extension.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BZC 328-85200 to 210 Hampton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Michael Flannery from Goldston Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue, Council to Nuextra.
Robert Springer, project manager for Nuextra Community.
So tell us what the request is for.
The request is for a one-year extension of zoning relief for the project at 200-210 Hampton Street.
Has it made any progress?
Yes, it has.
Yes, we're looking at securing new financing through the 4% tax credit program, so that's the thing, that's the difference between, yeah, 4% tax credits. We're trying to get that closed out so we can move forward with the project.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for one year.
Calling BZC 328-843-851, Dudley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Flannery, Goldston and Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue, Council to Nuextra Development.
I think that's the same one.
Is this an adjacent property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, may I have a motion for this?
Make a motion for a one-year extension as well.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 375-229, Four Crystal Place. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Steve Delanian, Four Crystal Place, Unit 2 in Charlestown, Mass. I was approved in 2015. I had a contractor lined up. Unfortunately, circumstances for him, and he was unable to do the work. I took a new job, and I wasn't able to...
So I'm sorry, when were you before this board?
January 2015.
So has the permit expired? Has the approval, have you been here before for an extension?
No.
Did you pull a, or your contractor, did he pull a building permit?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't see anything here.
So I have, my roof is leaking, and so I have extra work that needs to be done, so I figured I'd see if I could get an extension to kind of...
It's actually March of 2015.
Okay, so let's just think about this. So it would have expired two years. So it's an expired permit?
Yeah, mid-March of this year.
It would have expired March of 2017.
Last year, yeah.
What is the nature of the work at all?
So it was putting on a bathroom in the upstairs and then dormering out into the rear elm. But since my roof is leaking, I have other stuff that needs to be done, so I figured I'd see if I could get an extension for that prior work.
I'm sorry to say that even though it's a minimum, minimal project, we just have to, you know, stay with our requirements about the two years, the permit being pulled within two years.
Okay. So I need to go back through the process and get approved again?
But it should not be quite as painful this time around. Okay?
Okay.
And you live in the house, right?
Yes.
And it's a single-family?
It's a condo.
How many units?
Just two.
Okay, so that should be, we should be able to accommodate it on the Thursday night, Thursday evening subcommittees. So talk to Matt afterwards and see what you can do, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Calling the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30?
I'm sorry, can we have a motion?
I'm sorry.
Motion to deny. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Starting off the New Year right. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing none. I'll call the first case, calling BOA 755-158-151 to 153 Meridian Street. This is Phase 2, change occupancy from retail to two residential units and dental office on the bottom level and three residential units above. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. Extension of a rowhouse used for residential purposes on the second floor is conditional within the community commercial sub-district where typically new rowhouses are forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space, 50 square feet per unit. Article 53, Section 12, insufficient open space, and Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Additional dwelling units require its parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, MG2. With me is D'Artagnan Brown, Van Barck Studio. This is a very straightforward, simple request, Madam Chair. This property is located in the central square section of East Boston. Maybe about six years ago, the prior owner changed the legal occupancy to allow for commercial space on the second level. That use is no longer necessary with the current ownership. It was originally three residential units with a commercial space on the lower level. Our intent is to simply change it back to the prior use, but because commercial use was established on that second level would require relief from this board for the items that are cited. I would point out that there's no change in the physical structure or the footprint of the building. The existing shell of the building will remain the same. The use on the lower level will be a dental office, which is an allowed use in the community commercial sub-district. All of the variances or the requests for relief that's necessary is simply based upon the fact that we're changing back to the prior use.
So tell us what the sizes of the units?
Commercial space is about 1,545 square feet. Unit 1 and Unit 2, about 1,400 square feet, three bedrooms. And Unit 3, 780 square feet, one bedroom.
780?
780.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Jesus Garcia, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 771-174-164 to 170 Sumner Street. This is a wrecked, new four-story, six-unit mixed-use building on a lot with a proposed commercial ground floor. Restaurant with takeout, retail use, and three residential floors. Violation is Article 53, Section 12, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 12, excessive height. Article 53, Section 12, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking. And Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Attorney Diane Moll, 24 Hanes Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. And with me is Doug Stepperon, who is the architect for the project, and Paul Bruno, who is the petitioner for the project.
Please tell us briefly what's proposed, and tell us about the variances that you're requesting, what's required, and what's being proposed to this development.
Well, this mixed-use development of six residential units and a commercial unit on the ground floor is in a neighborhood shopping district, so that the use is allowed. I have to say that this particular project really is the poster child for transit-oriented development. Within a 500-foot radius, we have the MBTA Blue Line Maverick Station. We have hub bikes, I think at least probably 30 hub bikes. We're also close to water transit stops within, again, 500 feet, two of them. One operated by Boston Harbor Cruises and the other one operated by Rose Wharf Taxi Services.
So this is a proposal for six with ground-floor commercial use and three residential units, three residential floors?
Yes.
So your violations are FAR in height. Is this new construction or is this an existing building?
New construction.
Okay, so tell us what's required on height and what spring proposed.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, on height, we have a current limit of 35. We're requesting to go to 45 feet for the four stories. Rear yard setback, we have both a deck and an exterior egress stair that comes within 6.5 feet of the rear yard setback. Our floor error ratio is 2.7. And of course...
And what's required?
One.
Okay.
And parking is supposed to be 1.5 per dwelling unit, and of course, you can see we have not.
And why is there no dwelling, no parking proposed for a...
We decided to allow the ground floor to be commercial as it's a local services district as being a better use, as well as, as Diane had mentioned, its proximity to a variety of transit options. This makes it ideal for someone to get to where they want to go easily while then providing services to the neighborhood.
And what I might add, that this project meets the goals of Boston 230 as well as Drive Boston, because I know that the city is looking for ways of reducing the number of cars per household, and they're also looking to make sure that every home is no more than a 10-minute walk to major transit, and this project meets those goals.
And Doug, is this, are the upper floors overhanging the street, or are they in line with this?
The bays do overhang the street about 30 inches.
Okay. Let me just see if I have any further questions. You might have seen the BRA's recommendation.
No, I called, but they did not return my phone call. It's very difficult to get them.
Hold on. In the meantime...
Yesterday.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
What the height, 35 is available, and you've got 45. How does that compare to the building from the picture that looks like they're about 35?
Yeah, we have an eve next door for a gabled structure that is at 35 feet. The roof peak does go to beyond like 47. The building on the corner, it's obviously a roof structures. It is a little lower, but we do have a large structure across the street which is higher, which you see the view toward the ocean. So there's a mix.
Okay.
The chimneys that exist are even higher still for the adjacent brick structure.
And is there a roof deck proposed?
No.
No? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Jesus Garcia, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Does anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
The BRA recommendation is denial without prejudice.
No, without prejudice. No parking, it's too dense.
Yeah.
So the issue is density more than, more than height?
Yeah, well, I mean, the building itself is way too big. I mean, the zoning envelope allows for 35 and 1. They're asking for almost three times the density at 10 feet over the height. Plus, there's no parking. I understand what the TOD, but, you know, that's never been something that's been discussed within the zoning code that's, you know, something that we allow for the granting of variances.
May I respond to that?
Hold on. Are you satisfied with that response, Mr. Pizzani?
Yes, I am.
Yes, please, a quick response?
Yes, 3,600 square foot lots, it's basically a double lot. If these were two, three families, you would have six units. In addition to that, you know, I assume that each of those three families would exceed the 1.0 FAR. And secondly, you know, this, the city of Boston comes, you know, comes out with these policies. When developers try to meet those policies by building in proper locations that are close to transit, I would think that the Boston Redevelopment Authority, or PBDA, would support that.
No, I mean, this, the fact of the matter is the zoning is in place, and you're asking for variances from the zoning, you know, because it is...
And I'm providing evidence.
It is what regulates land use and land use development. Well, so I'm not here to argue the fact...
I know, but I, Madam Chair, I do want to make sure that you acknowledge the fact that we have submitted evidence relative to the variety of transit options that are available to this location.
Okay, so we know what the zoning requires. We know what this is, what is proposed. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, based on BRA recommendation.
And I too am opposed, but motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 773-382-364, Bunker Hill Street. This is to install new roof decks. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Shan, I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charlestown. I'm here representing Joe Cassely, who couldn't be here, the developer. We're just looking to put on a 16-foot square roof deck, which is a three-unit building, but just the top floor, third unit will have access to the deck through a hatch. We had a neighborhood meeting, which was, I think one, it was lightly attended. I think one person showed up, but it went well. They seemed okay. It was a neighbor, they seemed okay with the deck. And again, it'll just be for one unit. It won't be a common roof deck.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
As always, drawings are adequate.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Chris Green, we would like to go on record in support. There wasn't a butters meeting held, and one person attended and was in support. Thank you.
Does anybody here to speak in opposition?
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with continued BPDA design...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 773-894-14-Belmond Street. Add a new roof deck and spiral stairs. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restricted district. Access must be by a roof hatch. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. Madam Chair, my name is George Maransi. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a roof deck. This is a single-family rowhouse in Charlestown. The zoning district, I think, is a 3F. The lot size is measured at about 1,031 square feet. The dimensions of the deck are approximately 12 by 15 feet. Access to the deck would be via a rear spiral stair running from the rear yard. Looking at the plans and the refusal letter, I suspect that the only reason why this is cited is the fact that access is not through a hatch, although I don't even see that access via a rear spiral in and of itself causes a violation. It's certainly not a headhouse situation. And it's also somewhat larger than 1/3 of the area of the roof, hence the refusal letter. But I believe that there is no opposition to this.
So this is, this spiral essentially goes to the, to the rear, through the rear yard?
Correct. It goes to the rear yard and, again, goes, walks, rises to a level and walks out directly onto the deck without making use of a headhouse. And it is a single-family dwelling.
And is it owner occupied?
I believe so. I don't know. I don't want to go on the record with that.
Any questions from, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
What is the material used in the spiral staircase?
It appears to me to be some type of metal. I guess that would be, if this were approved with design review, I guess that would be subject to the BPDA.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Chris Green, we would like to go on record in support. There wasn't onsite a butters meeting held, and we are supporting this. Thank you.
Does anybody here to speak in opposition to this project? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 773-894-14, I'm sorry, I just called that one. Calling BOA 739-215-315 to 333 Washington Street. This is to change occupancy from a jewelry business to pain relief massage therapy, interior renovation of Suite 615 for tenant fit-out, and two non-bearing walls. Violation is Article 38, Section 18. Proposed use is forbidden in a midtown cultural district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Cameron Merrill. Merrill McGeeery, 100 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts, Suite 200.
So tell us what's being proposed?
What's being proposed is a pain therapy clinic. This is a site where Ms. Lucy Liu and her staff does acupressure, pain relief, sports therapy, massage. It is not a, it was cited as a massage parlor. It's more like a clinic, although they don't take tests or provide medicine. It's an alternative to pain medication and whatnot, where you would go specifically to address some type of situation, chronic headaches, back pain, or the like. It's not like a massage parlor where you would go for routine stress relief massage.
And is it, and it's on the sixth floor?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
I think when we, when we get ready to think about a motion, we should also think about the definition of a clinic in this, in this scenario. Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Danny Ching, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? And I would suggest that the motion be for approval as a massage, a massage use, because a clinic opens up a lot of other clinic uses that we are not prepared to approve at this moment.
Exactly, and that's why we were prepared to come through under this format rather than challenging the definition of clinic as it was interpreted.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a massage therapy facility.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 757-448-180, Endicott Street. This is to change occupancy from three apartments to four apartments, not adding any additional floor nor increasing the number of bedrooms. The violation is Article 54, Section 10, usable open space is insufficient, and Article 54, Section 21, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. William Farullo, McDermott, Colthea Miller, 28 State Street, on behalf of 180 Endicott Street LLC. Dr. Simp, Weller, as manager. As you have before you, this, this property is a four-story building on the Moth End, was originally constructed as three apartments with a ground-level commercial space. In 1976, the owners converted the ground floor to a residential unit for a handicapped family member, and at the same time, the owner used the third and fourth floor as his own unit, never really connected them, but used it as one unit, so therefore, the occupancy became three residential units only. We're proposing to go back to a four-unit building, four residential units, one at each floor, renovate the entire building. The building will be sprinkled. The size of each unit as a one-bedroom is approximately 530 square feet. Excuse me, it's one, one-bedroom occupancy. This has been reviewed by both community groups and supported by both groups as addition of a new unit to this building.
And there's no roof deck proposed?
There's, there's no roof deck. Intentionally is requested that not have a roof deck. One of the violations, as you see, is open space, so we are not adding any open space. We're not adding FAR. And needless to say, there's no place for the...
It's within the envelope completely. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
And by reducing the number of units, what is the, the new unit size is?
Did you say by reducing?
They're 530 each.
530.
Oh, I'm sorry, 530.
Basically, they're through, they're through four units.
They are through four.
The size of the building.
Is, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Marie Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held an Butters meeting for this project on November 15th of last year, which they gained the support of their Butters, and like Attorney Farullo stated, they also have the support of the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council and the North End Waterfront Residents Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 774-032-1230 to 1264 Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy from a pizza shop. Are you moving forward your project? Right up here, please. Change of occupancy from a pizza shop, 3736 offices, barber shop, retail, industrial manufacturing, employment office, and nail salon, and driving school to pizza shop, a 3736 offices, barber shop, retail, industrial manufacturing, nail salon, and a fitness studio. No material changes to the building nor structure required. Violation Article 64, Section 18, fitness center is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
1250 Washington, South End.
What's your name?
Justin Lowada.
So, tell us what's changing.
Just the occupancy, really. I'm not allowed to do a fitness studio there unless I change the occupancy.
Okay.
I'm not having no heavy equipment, no attachment, no build-out, nothing, I'm just.
So you're changing it from a driving school to a fitness studio?
Studio.
Okay. And what are the hours for this fitness studio?
Seven to eight, Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday will be from eight to two.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate. So the type of fitness is a series of heavy bags?
Yes.
It's boxing?
Yes.
Will, will there be new signage on the outside? Will there be new signage on the outside?
This is by appointment only, or is it open?
Open, and so it's real small, and again, the classes range from 12 to 14 people. So you go onto my website, you sign as a member, you get an app, so you can reserve your space, so it kind of bands the structure, so it won't be overcapacity, we all we have is the right amount of people in there.
Do you plan to do anything to mitigate the noise?
So the most of the noise is, me, people jumping, squatting, is not really hitting, the bags don't really make that much noise. We did a dry run, real quick, two days ago, I asked the neighbors, and they said they had no problem with the noise at all.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Faye Sharif, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of the proposal. We did hold an onsite a Butters meeting, and they did also meet with their neighborhood association. Many of the neighbors are actually really enthusiastic about activating the space, it's currently vacant, there's no residences on top, we're not really concerned about the noise in that sense, and it's the perfect location on Washington Street, so we're really looking forward to them opening.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record and tell us what your opposition is based on.
My name is John Vernon, and I speak for myself, as well as a neighbor of mine, John Stebbins, who also lives at 1280 Washington Street. The neighborhood development area is a very small area, and when you take out the park and the school, it's even smaller. We are reluctant to endorse any change in use in this area, because this is the largest undeveloped parcel on the entire section of, of the development area. And we're particularly concerned of what may happen once the entertainment use is approved on this parcel, which I believe is at least a half acre.
I'm sorry, are you talking about 1230 to 1264 Washington Street?
Yes, there's a single owner of the entire property, which runs across from Washington Street to Harrison Avenue.
Yes.
And it is a very large parcel of a property that is owned by a single individual.
So all we're looking at today is the conversion of a driving school space to a boxing studio?
We do not support a change in use simply because of the ultimate deterioration of the controls on this site as it becomes available to be developed at a future point. That is our concern, and therefore, we oppose the use.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA 753-977-10HUNTINGTON-AVE. This is a change of occupancy from a ground floor to fitness center, used utilizing 5,003 square feet and former Turner Fisheries Restaurant space. This is a change of use of the occupancy and existing structure from hotel, garage, retail, salon, restaurant, spa, and accessory uses to hotel, the hotel, garage, retail store, to salon, three restaurant spa, and other accessories used to the hotel and fitness center. The violation is Article 41, Section 17, health club or gym is a conditional use on ground floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Stephen Miller, McDermott, Coltian Miller, 28 State Street. Morning, Madam Chair, members. We're here seeking your approval for a fitness center at this location, which, part of which was formerly Turner Fisheries. The violation is because of the zoning, and the, the address is listed, it's the Western Hotel Building, and it's listed as 10 Huntington Avenue. Any ground floor space of more than 40 square feet requires zoning relief, it's a conditional use. Our entrance is actually on Stewart Street, but because the building is listed as 10 Huntington Ave, that requires a conditional use approval.
And it's just 5,000 square feet? And what kind of fitness center is it?
So Barry's Boot Camp currently operates over 40 spaces around the world. They have had one in Boston at 40 Chauncey Street for four years. They have another one in Chestnut Hill that they've had for six months. It's very little equipment, and it's more studio aerobics-type of fitness facility.
The hours of operation?
The hours of operation are roughly 6:00 AM, Monday through Friday, closing around 8:00 o'clock at night, and then Saturday and Sunday, about 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
We have met with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, and they do not oppose it, and we also have a letter of support in the file from the Back Bay Association, and we did do a Butters meeting at the request of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did have a process in which no one raised any concerns or questions in regards to what was being proposed here, so we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Laffer, Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. We met with the applicants and had a very good session, and we are not opposed.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Will there be new signage as far as the studio?
Yes, there will be new signage, right above our entrance on Stewart Street, which we're spending some time with the Neighborhood Architectural Committee in getting approval, but it's very limited signage.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, motion carries.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Calling BOA 749-994-5CLAMONTPARK. This is, include a rear deck on the second floor and exterior work, subject to historical approval. The violation is Article 64, Section 9, the addition of a balcony above the first floor is a conditional use for this sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chairman, Dartagnan Brown from Embark Studio, with me is Mark from Embark as well.
You can pull those closer if you want, they're not attached anywhere.
Tell us what's being proposed?
So we are proposing a deck off of the rear on the second floor. When originally submitted, we had a deck that was full width and six foot deep, working closely with the Butters. We have modified, which is the second sheet attached, the deck in regards to discussions with the neighbors in terms of sightline into their unit. So you can see on Sketch 1B, we've pulled the deck about seven foot two off of the property line to the left, next to 7 Clamont, and also in the other direction, we've pulled it about three feet back as well.
And tell us how it's mounted?
It's mounted with, if we go to the construction set.
Second to last page has details of a bracket.
It's a curved bracket that fastens back to the building.
Drawing supportive?
And we've also submitted, our clients work diligently in the neighborhood, we have 12 letters of support from a Butters coded on the map.
Why do you, do you need, this is not a G-Cod, is it? No, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Faye Sharif, with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We did hold multiple Butters meetings regarding this roof deck. There is one small contention with the directed Butters next door, but the vast majority of the folks in attendance were in support of it. It does fit in with the character of the surrounding buildings, and we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA design review for back end.
All those in, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without proviso. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA 771-102-11CLAMONTPARK. This is to change use for two residential units, interior renovation, exterior renovations, and extend a rear bay from the first level down to the ground floor, install rear decks, and construct a new addition at roof to include a penthouse addition of 260 square feet and roof deck, and install a new fire suppression system. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Article 64, Section 8, 2F and a 1F sub-district is forbidden. Article 64, Section 9, townhouse, row house extensions into the rear yard, and Article 64, Section 9, dimensional regulations excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dartagnan Brown from Embark Studio, with me is Mark from Embark as well.
Please, Christian, why don't you go ahead?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Happy New Year. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have the BWSE approval letter.
Thank you. So please tell us what's being proposed, tell us what zoning requires and what you're proposing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's an existing single-family, we're seeking conversion to two family dwelling units. On the garden level, we're looking to extend the existing rear bay down to the garden-level patio, and on the roof, we're looking to erect a penthouse. Working with the Butters at 9 Clamont Park, we have modified, which we have submitted a, the penthouse, in, in discussions with them to make sure sightlines and issues were addressed as well, and these drawings reflect that change.
It's a penthouse and roof deck?
Correct, penthouse and roof deck.
So the largest, the penthouse?
The penthouse is 295 square feet.
Okay, and are there rear decks also being proposed?
Correct, there's a rear deck off of second level, this is within a six-foot dimension, and cantilever brackets as well.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
One more question, what are the sizes of the proposed units?
The lower duplex unit is approximately 1,800 square feet, and the upper triplex unit with the penthouse is around 2,100 square feet.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Faye Sharif, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd also like to go on record in support of this proposal as well. I believe they did work out some of the concerns that the neighbors had, and the neighbors are in support of what's presented.
You're busy today, huh? Is anybody else to speak in support, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA design review.
Second.
As well as, um, my.
Thank you. Thank you.
Was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling next case, calling BOA 734-095-34CONCERDSTREET. There's also a companion case in building code, BOA 734-098-34CONCERDSTREET. This is to construct a rear deck and roof deck. The violation is Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse, row house, extension. Conca Square, I'm sorry. Thank you, Al. The building code is, the section 1009.13.1, roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse. Name and address for the record, please.
Chairman Moran, Alpine Advisory Services. Joining me at the table is the owner.
Francis Martin, 34 Conca Square.
Madam Chair, we seek, under the zoning code, a conditional use permit for a rear deck projecting six feet, supported by brackets, and...
You know, could you please address the building code first?
Yes, I've submitted a separate building code document to Mr. Bazani, attaching the Sullivan Code Group analysis of the exemption in historic districts of compliance with the state building code. This particular building is in the South End Historic District, subject, because of its location, to review by landmarks, it is a contributing district. We have a contributing building to the district. We have asserted the exemption rights under Chapter 11 of the state building code, Section 308, which states that alterations, additions, restorations need not apply if the building code official deems the substitute, in this case, the hatch, does not constitute a distinct life safety hazard. The glazing on the proposed hatch is safety glazing. I have submitted a example in the package for building code review of the proposed hatch, which will open to the side. There is continuous headroom clearance, there will be a railing and a fence around the deck, and a continuous railing on the stairway is shown in the example of what is being proposed as access.
Hold on, hold on, let me just check in, Mr. Bazani, have you reviewed the, the document?
I, I have, and this is consistent with what we've done many times, and that is within historic districts. It is, I think, a greater benefit to have a hatch rather than the headhouse. And this is accessible for the whole building, or just for one unit?
One unit.
That's right. So that the effect of transportation, in terms of people walking up and down, is therefore minimized, because it's really dealing with simply one unit, not the whole building. I believe that the code really intended that section to, when it's common access running all the way up to the building. I make a motion to grant the building code relief requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So tell us now about the rear and roof decks, tell us about the rear decks.
The rear deck is at the second floor. The last page of the submission shows that it will be supported by brackets, projecting six feet, the usual during the community process. We modify the deck by pulling it back from the adjoining building at 36. I would like to commend Ms. Sharif on her excellent community process. This project had generated some opposition, which was resolved, and we, we now have no known opposition.
What is the dimension of that deck? In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Draw, drawings are adequate. The, the deck is six feet deep.
The roof deck?
Six feet.
Six feet square?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, no, this is a rear deck.
Yes, and how about the roof? Yes, and how about the roof deck?
Roof deck, I don't have the plans in front of me.
Okay. In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Could we just get clarification on the roof deck? Because I'm looking at A106 and it shows the existing roof level and then the proposed roof level. And where is the plan that actually shows the roof deck?
The, I believe it is A103. The dimensions of the roof deck comply with the setbacks, five feet in the front, five feet in the rear.
Just for the record, we would like to get the size. In the meantime?
So, well...
Sorry.
A103 clearly shows the bracket-supported deck. And again, I'm looking for a plan of the roof deck.
In the meantime, will you please go on the record?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. One final time, I would like to go on record in support of this proposal. My name is Faiza Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did hold an extensive community process regarding this and the proponents did work with their directed butters to address all of the concerns, including the sizing of the deck and also the privacy issue with the skylight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Okay, but before we proceed, please give me the size of the roof deck.
If I may.
My apologies. Okay, so what I would suggest is that we make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion for approval with continued BRA Design Review. But we will hold that approval until you submit a plan of the roof deck and BRA has a chance to take a look at it.
Mr. Pizzani, I think this is in a historic district.
A what?
In a historic district.
Well, okay. Landmarks, landmark.
I have a second.
The assessing map that I filed shows that both the rear deck and the roof deck are subject to landmarks approval.
Do you have a copy of that?
It's a bit...
So what, so there's a motion on the table for approval and to hold signature until we get the correct drawing. And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that request that the drawings be submitted.
Thank you.
Calling BO, calling BOA 762-105, 130 to 132 Jersey Street. This is a change of use space from a laundromat to restaurant to two restaurants. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use, adding a second restaurant to the building. Article 32, Section 32.4, groundwater conservation overlay district. Article 66, Section 8, restaurant is forbidden use in an MFR 2 sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, board members, my name's Chris Coleman, 128 Lincoln Street in Boston on behalf of the applicant.
In each and twenty-second High Street of Brooklyn.
Thank you. One minute, please, Christian.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. There has been some debate on whether or not this project actually even triggered the G-Cod. Based on the applicant's description of the project, to me, I didn't see that any of the triggers in fact were met to, for G-Cod. It was forwarded to, my comments were forwarded to Inspection Services to James Kennedy and basically I was in a holding pattern to wait to hear back from him. He did intend that he would communicate his comments to the board for today's meeting, whether or not this does in fact trigger G-Cod, so I defer to ISD on this one.
Do we have anything in the file?
Do not.
We do not. So, thank you.
Okay.
So please tell us what's being proposed?
Of course. There's one structure on the site. It's split in half. There's basically 1,300 square feet on either side. The left side has a restaurant currently. The right side has a laundromat. We're gonna, we're seeking to change the use of the right side to a teahouse. It's unfortunate that it has to come into the restaurant category because they don't serve any food there, but it's really just like a coffee house except tea. The Fenway Civic Association has come out in support. They cited it enhances the quality of the neighborhood, no alcohol service, no noise, no detriment to the neighborhood, and consistent with the existing use that's there. So that's pretty much it.
Is this also a request for takeout?
Yes, there is. And it's, it's, yeah, I guess people will be walking out with tea as well as they'll be sitting there drinking it. There's about 10 seats there, so I think, given all the apartments in the area and the walking traffic, I think they'll just be taking and going quite a bit.
It's just the extension of non-conforming use and that is, so the extension, okay.
Yeah, the restaurant is not, not, the restaurant's not permitted there. There's one there now and unfortunately, classification requires that.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
The DA, they have to have mentioned deferral for admission. Is that, is that no longer accurate? We don't have adequate plans?
What's that? I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry about that.
So, but, so you're all set? You recommend...
Yeah, I recommended deferral because we didn't have plans for the restaurant. Correct. Still, yes.
We do have plans.
Right, but we didn't have them at the time, the recommendation, so. Non-issue was right.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, just so thorough, at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Fenway Civic Association is in support. Our office would like to go in support as well. There have been no questions or concerns regarding this proposal here for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Will there be new signs associated with the teahouse?
There'll be signs there, yes.
I would make a motion for approval for BPDA Design Review with respect to sign attempts and use of takeout.
And then we will hold signature until we have some communication from ISD. And, and, and did you say the usual G-Cod?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 772-605, 927 to 929 East Broadway. This is to modify an existing dormer with new exterior door and access to new roof deck. And this is also construct a new roof deck. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Jason Kurtz of Kurtz Design Studio, Architect of Record.
Please, what's being proposed?
The, we're proposing to put a roof deck on the unit and access it from the existing property. The, essentially, the unit footprint, 50% of the unit footprint is two-story and we're requesting to access it through an existing dormer at the second level of the unit out onto the roof deck.
Units in the building?
Correct. Oh, four units. Four units. Two, two at the first floor, one at the second.
This would be only for the top unit?
This is a private, yes.
Private deck, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate and that you show the roof deck on the roof.
On the street. Any questions from the board?
Along.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're not able to go on record in support at this time simply because we have heard from the City Point Neighborhood Association that they are not in support due to the butters meeting where there were some concerns around the deck being across the street from a historic building and, you know, noise issues.
So this is across the street from a historic building?
Yes.
It's not in a historic building?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Ed Flynn's office. We too are in opposition due to the fact that the Neighborhood Association is not on board with this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, I'm the Office of City Council at large, Michael Flaherty. Echoing sentiments of the Mayor's Office as well as District Office Counselor, we'd like to go on record in opposition and also due to the fact this falls into Article 68.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
May I rebut?
Okay.
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
The project has merit, but privacy requires a lot of work with the butters.
So it's, it's a small deck, right? So is, is there a reason to deny it?
Well, the reason to deny it is that if we take into account neighborhood opposition...
I, I think there's a motion on the floor that was seconded.
If you don't take into account neighborhood opposition, then there's no reason to deny it. I take into account neighborhood opposition.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? What, what is the access to the, to the deck?
It's through, in essence, a dormer.
Correct. It's, it's an existing second story on, of the unit that you would just be accessing through the dormer, creating a door in the dormer instead of a window.
Okay. So there's a motion, may I have, and there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carry. I'm sorry. So there's two oppositions and the motion, I'm, I'm voting against the, against the motion. So it's approved.
Thank you.
It doesn't have to go to a revote?
No.
I think it does. I think it does.
No, it, no, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Oh.
Because it wasn't for approval, it was for...
It was for denial. So it does need to go to a revote. Sorry. So may I?
I said we need a new motion for approval.
Yes, a, a new motion, please.
Motion to approve BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
I would just amend that just to ask that they have further conversation with the community in order to try to get on board.
Is there a second? They say it's a second?
There was a second with that amendment.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And I vote with the motion, so it's been approved with Design Review.
Calling next case, calling BOA 779...
Bruce, Marie, Mark and myself. So yes, it's approved.
Calling next...
Don't need five votes for approval.
You need five.
Need five, that's not four.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Two opposed and re-opposed.
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 So that doesn't carry either.
Is this a good way to start a new show? Okay, so may I have one more motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
This time I will work, I will vote with the motion of denial without prejudice. Okay? So sadly, a denied without prejudice means that you need, you can come back with, with a plan. Okay?
It's now 10:33. I'm gonna call, are there any 10:30 cases for deferral or withdrawal? Are they deferring, withdrawing?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna call the, call the next cases up for, until the 10:30s come up.
Is it 10:30?
We're 10:30.
Are you deferring or withdrawing?
No.
This is only for deferrals or withdrawals. We're still on the 9:30, I'm sorry. Yeah, the 9:30 cases. This is for 10:30. Are there deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
222 Harvard Street.
I'm sorry?
222 Harvard Street.
Are you deferring?
Yes, asking you to go.
Okay, hold on, hold on one minute.
Okay, hold on two seconds. Harvard Street?
Yes.
Okay. There's three of them, so we're gonna call them into the record. Calling BOA 77099, 47 Harvard Street. Companion case is BO...
Harvard Street.
Harvard.
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 222 Harvard.
222 Harvard. Sorry, 10:30.
222.
222?
Yep.
Calling BOA, no, no. Calling BOA 766-691, 222 Harvard Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, put your name and address on the, on the record, please, Doug. Yeah.
Are you deferring, sir?
Yes.
So put your name and address on the record.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Douglas Land, architect for 222 Harvard Street.
And what, and you're requesting a deferral?
To request a deferral, to have more community input and including BRA Design Review.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deferral.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
March 6th.
March 6th at 11:30.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Bearing them, we'll go back to the 9:30s. Calling BOA 779-860, 14 I Street. There's a companion case, BOA 779-861, 14 I Street. This is adding a roof deck on an existing flat roof, portion of the owner's roof rights as per condo deed, adding access to a roof or a new spiral staircase ascending from existing private deck belonging to the owner on the top floor. This is cut through an existing parapet wall, a roof and, for the, for the staircase.
100 square feet.
Portion of a proposed roof deck. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restricted district. Article 68, Section 8, the height is excessive. There's also building code. Access to an occupied roof, a building for four stories or more shall be through a penthouse. Name and, name and address for the record, please.
Chris Ritter, 10 Kilcythe Road. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Straven, the, the owner. I'm one of the architects working on the project.
So this is our usual procedure here. Can you address the building code violation first?
I believe there is a, a height violation that is, the building is...
So the building code violation is, is referring to the, to the roof access?
Yes.
Okay. It shall, it says access to an occupied roof of building of four stories or more shall be through a penthouse.
Okay. So as of now, we have it accessed by a spiral staircase on the existing fourth, fourth floor deck. It's the private deck of, of the owner. So we are, you know, looking for relief from, from that and as well the, the height for the extension of the parapet wall to make the, the railing 42 inches and then...
Mr. Pizzani, is that, is that enough, enough reason for this to, for the roof access?
Well, the issue here is, is the roof access by the spiral stair for one unit only or is it for multiple?
Yes. Yeah, I meant to clarify. This, this is a private roof deck for, just, just for this, this owner's unit.
Okay, okay. So the general roof deck is a separate issue.
You mean...
You have, you have a force, in essence, giving the two roof decks. One is a real roof deck on the top of the roof.
Yes.
And the other is a private access.
Well, there's an existing deck now that is directly behind the unit, which might, Well, there's an existing deck now that is directly behind the unit, which might... Should show up in the drawings. So that is not a roof deck though. That's just his deck. So we're trying to access the roof from that deck with the spiral stair.
Sort of like a balcony.
Excuse me? What did you say, sir?
I said that's like a balcony?
Yeah, I mean, you could say it's directly off of the owner's unit, so the deck...
Same level, same grade.
Exactly. So then the new deck we're putting is on the roof, you know, on the deeded rights to the owner's unit.
Mr. Bizani, does that answer the building code violation?
Yes, I'll make a motion to grant building code relief for the single unit only via the spiral stair.
Thank you.
Okay, let's now talk about the merits of the case. This is for a roof deck. And what is a small shading structure?
It's basically just a pergola with, you know, like a steel structure that we've engineered to attach to the existing building and then just like a wooden kind of roof. Like, it's not an enclosed structure, but just...
And how tall is that pergola?
About nine feet from...
Nine feet?
So, yeah, so we're adding... We're adding essentially about six feet to the overall height of the building because there's already a parapet.
Okay.
So, but...
In fact, can't the structured pergola be considered a roof?
Excuse me?
Be considered a roof.
With the top...
Because what generally happens with these things is they start off as a roof, and then people discover that, gee, it's raining, and then it starts covering all over. And the point is that visually, from the ground, it reads as a roof, not as simply a roof deck.
Roof deck, right.
And I think that therein is the problem.
So we had a neighbors' meeting to address, you know, some of the concerns and, you know, everybody was in support of this. And with the packet I put together, I'm trying to...
But can you please respond to Mr. Bizani's question?
What... So you're saying it's a problem because, like visually, it's a problem?
Yeah, I mean, it reads as a solid surface up there.
Yeah, no, I guess...
Because in event, it will get covered. I mean, it just always does.
It will get covered with a...
And so it has the effect of adding another floor to the building visually.
I... Well, I guess it's up to the owner, but he definitely does not want to do that. And we don't want to cover it with any kind of a rain-proof screen, just, you know, due to the engineering involved. So we wanted to keep it more open.
Was this property before this board in the past, when it was initially approved?
I believe all those properties over there on... Mike Niskanen did about... Probably about 15 buildings on that block. And so I think he had to get some type of a zoning relief for all of those.
And do you know if a request from roof decks was part of that request? And if there were any issues with that at the time?
With the roof decks he did on his other buildings, you mean?
On this building?
I don't know that. I know that the roof rights are deeded to the two units on the top floor. So, you know, I think the thinking all along was that there would be roof decks. There was originally a headhouse approved for mechanical space, I believe, but that was never built, so... I guess with the packet, what I was trying to address mostly was that this particular deck and the structure is buried so far into the block that it's... Which I think was some of the neighbors' concerns, was that it would, you know, visually be disruptive or...
Mr. Bizani, I think there's a way of looking at this with or without a pergola.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And I think the notion of something up there can be dealt with with the BPDAD under design review. But again, when I take a look at the detailed plan of the roof and the pergola, I mean, it's very nicely done, the IP and all of that, but there's so close this space against it.
The woods...
It's...
The woods slash, okay.
Yeah. It is the effect of a solid roof.
Yeah, I hear. There was... We had a lot of design options. One was just with some cable and vines. So we might go back to something like that if it's a problem.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, just in line with Mr. Bizani's concerns, it does look like you're raising the level of the roof. It looks like it. And I noticed in the BPDAD comments that they comment on the same issue and are recommending approval, but with denial of the shading structure, which is a pergola. So, Justin, I think there's a way of cutting this case in half.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold an onsite Abutters Meeting, and people were generally supportive due to the fact the roof deck is somewhat concealed from neighboring buildings as well as exclusive to this unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Sorry. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Ed Flynn's office. Unfortunately, due to it violating Article 68, we can't support this project at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. I'm the Assistant Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Due to the community process and all the work that went into drafting Article 68, the council is unable to support the project at this time. However, it does recognize that various projects do hold merit and leave it to discretion of the board.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested with the following proviso, that extensive BPDAD design reviews to reduce the lack of openness of a pergola. And if they come up with a traditional pergola with wider spacing, it may affect that.
Second.
And this would come to us as board final arbiter if there's an issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Calling next case, calling BOA 778302, 224 M Street. This is to propose two off-street parking spaces in the rear of the residence. The violation, Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, Members, the building is a three-family dwelling at the corner of Marine Road and East 8th Street. It's currently being extensively renovated. The handout that I provided to the board on the second page actually shows the building in the midst of renovation, and it shows the area to the rear that would be the site of the two proposed off-street parking spaces. There is, to the rear of the building or to the side of it, as one is facing the building from on the Marine roadside and directly adjacent to the proposed parking area, there's a two-car garage with an existing curb cut that would essentially be extended 12 feet down to provide access to the two proposed parking spaces, thus trading one on-street parking space for two off-street parking spaces. The parking spaces would be eight and a half by 20 feet, meeting BTD requirements. The sole zoning violation is for insufficient usable open space. Essentially, the rear yard as open space is being traded for two parking spaces. This building is one...
I'm just trying to understand these drawings. So that this garage, is this on the property or is that on the Abutters?
No, that's the... That's a separate property.
Okay.
Right. The parking is in the area there that is showing as kind of a dirt excavated area.
That's where all the dirt is?
Yeah, exactly.
And that curb cut would be essentially extended to the rear of that building?
Correct.
Where is the second means of egress then for this building? Does it come into that parking spaces or is that internally?
I believe...
Or is that internal to the building?
Yeah, it's internal to the building. I mean, I know that we weren't cited for it, so I didn't look at that, but there are rear sliders and...
And are the roof decks attached to those sliders?
No.
Or decks attached to the sliders?
Yes, I actually am looking here. There are... Yes. Sorry, the board doesn't have all the voters, but I'm looking here. There are new porches being constructed there, so the rear... The secondary access would come off of those porches.
And there'll be that room for that and the parking spots?
Apparently. Again, all I can say is that there's nothing been cited here for a building code violation on that.
Okay. What are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold an onsite Abutters Meeting, and there was support for this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor, Ed Flynn's office. Due to Article 68, we cannot support it at this time. However, the Abutters Meeting was well-attended, and the neighbors seem to be okay with it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. I'm the Assistant Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Due to the extensive work that went into drafting Article 68, the council is unable to support the product at this particular time. However, the council recognizes that there are products that do have merit and will leave it to discretion of the board.
Mr. Bizani, my question, is there parking on this side of the street?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Is that one... Counsel, is that one contiguous curb cut then? Is that what's going to happen there?
Yes, that would be... Well, again, it depends on DPW. I know that it is showing two flares on the plans on the left side. Whether... Again, it depends on what BT... I'm sorry, what the DPW requires in PIC, whether or not the flares are going to be there or whether there will be a continuous curb cut. I think the preference sometime is to put in the curving flares. But again, that will depend upon DPW.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
March approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the last three cases for 9:30, calling BOA 778302, 224 M... I'm sorry. BOA 779099, 47 Harvard Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 777101, 47 Rare Harvard Street, and BOA 777107, 53 to 55 Harvard Street. This is for 47. This is proposed two off-street parking, additional four off-street parking, total of six off-street parking for 47 Rare Harvard Street. Violation is Article 65, Section 8, ancillary parking is a conditional use. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 47 Rare Harvard. Change of occupancy from existing carriage house to four residential units. Renovate, including a new fire sprinkler system. Work will remain within the existing building envelope to meet the off-street parking requirements. Violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling, four residential units are forbidden use. Article 65, Section 9, utility access shall be readily accessible by an individual tenant. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And for 53 to 55 Harvard Street, proposed four off-street parking, additional two off-street parking, and a total of six for 47 Rare Harvard Street. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, ancillary parking is conditional use, and Article 9, Section 1, existing three-family dwelling on a 2F 5,000 zoning sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined to my immediate right by Kevin Deeble of Road A Architects, Project Architects, and to his right by our client and the owner of the property, Adam Sabah. Adam owns both 47 and 53-55 to the left. Revised plans have been submitted to the board. The major change being is that the conversion, proposed conversion of the rear carriage house into a four-unit dwelling building has been modified and reduced. The current proposal is to modify that, convert it into a two-unit dwelling building. The result for zoning is that the forbidden use for the 4F disappears since this is a 2F district, and also 47R Harvard Street on one of the three refusal letters is cited for insufficient off-street parking. That would have been the case for the four proposed units, but with two parking spaces for the two proposed units meets code requirements for parking for that building, and that violation also disappears.
So tell us, what's the occupancy at number 47?
So both existing buildings are three-family dwellings.
Okay.
This is not a consolidation of lots. The lot line is going to remain. That is the cause for the ancillary parking violations on the refusal letters. Essentially, what's happening is there is an existing carriage house that's going to be converted to a two-family dwelling within its present footprint. That building will, along with the other two buildings, 53, 55, and 47, which are rental buildings that my client owns, will be serviced by two parking spaces in the carriage house conversion for the two units. But then there will also be four parking spaces to the rear of 53-55 Harvard Street, and then two parking spaces between the carriage house building that's being converted and the existing structure at 47 Harvard Street. The result is the site, if it were considered to be a single site, would have eight dwelling units and eight parking spaces. There are currently six dwelling units and no off-street parking spaces.
So it'd be eight dwelling units and eight parking spots?
Exactly. And the driveway would be effectively a common driveway, and the six parking spaces on the site would be used by the existing three-family dwelling of 53-55 in at 47, and of course, the two units within the carriage house conversion, the two spaces within the carriage house conversion would be for those two units in that building.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
The clarification's...
Yep.
I'm looking at the plot plan, and I only see six parking spaces.
Yes, there are two... If you go to the architectural plans, Mr. Ehrlich, there's a ground floor garage, which is a two-vehicle garage in the carriage house. So that's the total of eight.
And what is the... What... Where the proposed parking spaces, the four behind 53, 55, what's there now?
It's just rear yard area.
Just ground?
Yes.
So what's the zoning in this district again?
It's a 2F 5,000 district. 5,000 square feet is the minimum required of the two lots. 47 is 6,477 square feet, and 53-55 is 5,340 square feet. Going through the zoning refusal letters, for 47, harvest, the violations are the ancillary use violation for the parking because there are four spaces on a separate lot, which may in fact end up serving some of the residents of 47. And the reason I say may is because these are rental buildings, so it kind of depends on who's renting them at the time, whether they have a vehicle, and whether they need a parking space. The other violation on 47 is an insufficient usable open space violation. Not much of the usable open space was being used as such, but there would be two parking spaces introduced, and of course, the paved driveway. 47R, which relates to the conversion of the carriage house building that's existing, the violations were insufficient off-street parking. That violation goes away with the reduction in the number of units. A multifamily dwelling is a forbidden use. That violation goes away because it's now a two-family dwelling. And there's an excessive FAR violation, which has been attributed to 47R, but essentially results from the combination of 47 and 47R. I think it was attributed to the 47R application because it's caused by, obviously, the conversion of that space into living space. 47 is remaining as is. With respect to 53-55, there is the use violation for ancillary parking, similar to the other lot, and an extension of a non-conforming use. It's a three-f... A three-family dwelling in a two-family zone. How is that being extended, Kevin?
How is it being... The use being extended?
Yes.
It is... Was converted to a three-family structure prior to this application. So that lot itself, the action that we're taking now is to approve the parking that would be ancillary to the... Well, to the other site, 47.
So can you tell us at... Let's just see, at 53 to 55, what the sizes are of each unit and the number of bedrooms?
Fifty... Fifty, the building, the existing building?
They're actually condominiums, so this has been-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's right. Dwelling unit, condominium. They're all within the range of two, three two-bedroom units, about 1,100 to 1,200 square feet each. That's about an average of the three units.
And how about 47?
47 is very similar. Three two-bedrooms, also totaling about 1,200 square feet per.
And tell us about the proposed carriage house?
So the carriage house is being essentially recreated. This is a, kind of an example that you see in Dorchester on larger lots, but a pretty good one with a center entrance, so we're maintaining all of that. This has really kind of met its demise a little bit, just out of decay, so this is a restoration of that to-
Is it a tear down, a start over?
It looks, it looks that way, but we're, we have all the, you know, record right in our proposal here about where that footprint is, as well as accurate measurements to its eve. It's just sort of, kind of impossible to reuse this type of structure, even though we're kind of keeping a slab on grade. But we're going to maintain and actually restore some features. You see some of the cupula, the patterning of the windows, center entrance, and-
And it's going to stay the same height, or-
Correct.
It's the same height, same footprint, completely, same envelope?
Yes.
Okay. So how large are the units in there?
One unit is 1,150 square feet, and that's a two-bedroom, two-bath. Another unit would be a larger two-bedroom plus den, 1,700 square feet. So they're split, and this is a, again, a single entrance with a sprinkler system.
And George, tell us how legally the ancillary parking is going to be accommodated? Is there going to be something at the registry of deeds? How is this proposed to happen?
Well, there would be a cross easement, would be recorded for the driveway, and then the parking spaces, again, it would kind of be what the need is in terms of the three buildings, but what would be recorded would in fact be a cross easement.
I mean, they're currently in the same ownership. Should one of the parcels be sold?
I, I-
How is the neighborhood protected?
I misspoke. I indicated that 53-55 was a rental building, but it's actually-
Both are condos.
Yeah, they're condos. So they would have to be, the parking could be handled through the condominium documents, which again is a recorded, master deed is a recorded instrument.
So, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
We have some letters in support, including from the McCormick Civic Association, which voted in December to support the applications.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support at this time. They do have the support of the McCormick Civic Association, as well as some of others, as reflected in the letters I think they've submitted. We did have in a butters meeting on this, at which people were vehemently opposed to the four-unit project. One common thread at that meeting was people did feel a two-unit project might be appropriate, so we are in support of the two-unit project at this time.
And John, were there provisos about fencing and sightlines and things like that?
Not that I recall, no.
Mr. Maransy, because I thought I saw something on my email-
There are provisos. I can submit this to the Board, I can read them, I can submit this to the Board. I know that typically the Board doesn't incorporate neighborhood negotiations into its official provisos on the decision, but-
It's in the letter that we handed out.
Yes, and it's separate there in terms of what the agreements are that my client reached with the butters. So obviously, to the Board's discretion, how it wishes to handle that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Counselor Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is, are you speaking in support?
I'm Isabel Polanka. I live at 45 Harvest Street, and I'm representing myself and also our condo association, where we have two units. We're the closest building to that project. We're in support based on the proviso list that was provided to the Board, and also with special concern with our views not being affected. We have a roof deck, and this is in the line of sight of like the prudential and the skyline in general. So I trust that this will be reviewed in the BRA design review.
Thank you.
Did you mention a roof deck?
Yeah.
Her roof deck.
Her roof deck, at 45. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review and continued work with the neighborhood.
Can I amend that to?
I'll think about it.
We'll have a proviso that would incorporate the agreement reached with the neighbors.
So.
All right. I don't know if we can do that.
Let's look at it and see what might be helpful. So as far as design review, I suppose that besides design review, there would be lighting, right? And HVAC units?
I can also, I mean, say that we will work with BPDA on this list, where we're frequently asked to buy the BPDA to look at, you know, at these lists and-
So besides, included in the design review, we ask for a relook at the-
Special attention to the list of conditions submitted to the Board?
No, no, just at design review for the basic structure, two for exterior lighting, and three for placement of the HVAC units. Everything else, I think you can deal with.
And I just want to make sure, for the previous speaker, since she was kind of after speak in support, her specific concern about views had to do with the cupula, so I just wanted to make sure that's on the record, because we did have a conversation in the hall, and I said that we would specifically make sure that the BRA looks at that cupula.
Thank you for the add-on. Is there a second?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call for deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30 one more time. Address, please.
50 Eldridge.
I'm sorry?
50 Eldridge. Lila Hayes.
Hold on a second. Are you deferring it?
Oh, sorry, no. I can wait, I missed you.
But deferrals or withdrawals only.
All right.
Okay, hearing none, the Board is going to take, we'll be back in session at 11:15. Welcome back. The Board of Appeal for January 9th is back in session. Please take all conversations outside of the room. Make sure your cell phones are off, and in conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, please give us new information. If somebody has already stated your concern, put your name and address on the record. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the first case for 10:30, BOA 776-192, 54 New Market Square. This is a change of occupancy from a warehouse with accessory office to fitness center. Interior renovations for a new tenant fit out. Violation's Article 90, Section 7, fitness center is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Sandy Coyle.
Your address, please?
Personal?
No.
Sorry, 54 New Market Square in Boston.
Who else will be talking?
My name's Chris Staggitt. I'm the chapter manager for Phoenix in 54 New Market Square.
I'm just calling from the main construction.
Can you tell us what's being proposed?
We are proposing a change of occupancy from warehouse to fitness center. We're not making any change to the physical structure. We're doing minor renovations. The Phoenix is a nonprofit organization. We provide free fitness and sports to individuals, families, and the community that have a minimum of 48 hours continuous sobriety. Our mission is to provide free recovery support services and to reduce the stigma around addiction. We-
So just hold on one minute. So tell us, how large is this facility? How many square feet?
The facility is just under 11,000 square feet.
Uh-huh. And the hours of operation?
We will be in operation from about 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
And, and membership is restricted to members of the Phoenix House? It's not going to be open to the general public? I mean, Phoenix program?
The Phoenix is, our Phoenix is different. It's not associated or affiliated with the Phoenix House. We are open membership. The only criteria is for individuals to have a minimum of 48 hours continuous sobriety.
And so what's your anticipated membership?
Currently, we've been operating in a 2,000-square-foot facility in the Carter Auditorium, which was supported by the Mayor's Office originally about 18 months ago. We have, in 18 months, served close to 500 individuals, so with having 11,000 square feet, we expect to serve upwards of 2,000 to 5,000 in the first year, and grow our membership from there.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. If you have a question, how many parking spaces are available?
I believe that's cited on the renderings, but it's at about 30-plus parking spots on the property.
Mr. Bizani, the only violation that was cited for them was the fitness use as forbidden.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and is this a full gym?
It is a gym with meeting space and offices.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. What other kind of services do you offer?
We offer, will offer peer recovery coaching. All of our services are peer-to-peer led. There's no clinical or therapeutic interventions onsite or as part of our mission. So the peer-to-peer model is that we hire staff who are individuals with lived experience, either in their own recovery from addiction, or family members of loved ones that have over, that have experienced addiction.
And I'm familiar with your, with your goals, and one of my questions is, is out of this facility, will you be running groups like, I know at some places you offer mountain biking, you offer mountain climbing. Will you be offering excursions from this to other places and continue to do that kind of work to bring those people?
Currently, we have a, locally, a partnership with the Wool Rock, Boston Rock Gym in Woburn. So off-site, we provide Phoenix rock climbing. We also work in the outdoors locally for hikes in New Hampshire with skiing and hiking and surfing and so forth, so yes.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Josh McFadden, we would like to go on record in support of this project. We have garnered the support of the area butters and the business community through the New Market Business Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Counselor Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. Vice Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Well, and Chair, Members of the Board, Mayor Perez, representing the Carpenter Resilient. In behalf of hundreds of members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, we'd like to go on record in support.
Sue Sullivan, New Market Business Association. We were integral in the zoning planning process a couple of years ago for Article 90. We are in support of this because of the mission and, and their, their goals and what they've been able to do with this program. We are in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve for this facility, for this group, moving forward. If that changes, they'll need to come back to us to get, to get rezoned again. So in other words, this can, my, my, my motion will give this support for this group only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso.
Thank you for your much-needed work.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 779-137, 28 Leland Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a group home for 24 persons, and also adding a new fire and alarm sprinkler system. The violation's Article 50, Section 28, group residence general is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Yates, 8 Farnham Street, Roxbury, Mass.
Joseph Lieber with Klein-Hornig LLP. My residence is 15 Sims Street in Rosendale.
I'm sorry, who are you with?
I'm counsel for the project, permitting counsel.
Fred, 8 Farnham Street. Fred, are you on?
Tell us what's being proposed.
Well, it's a, it's a conditional use permit for a-
Is it a conditional use?
I'm sorry?
Is it a conditional or forbidden use?
It's a conditional use for group care residence general. And I think, Paul, you should probably describe the-
Tell us what's being proposed. Yeah, that's a good idea.
So what's being proposed is, is Hope House is the oldest drug and alcohol recovery program in the state of Massachusetts, and currently, we have a six-month residential program over in Lower Roxbury behind Boston Medical Center. That program consists of three phases, intensive, intensive treatment, case management for employment and other opportunities, and then stabilization. Because of the high prices in Boston and in the metro area, a lot of the graduates from that program have had to move off, out of the city, and they've got derailed from their primary, from their medical services, from their, from their 12-step community, and from their employment. So we're proposing a graduate program, which would be added as Phase Four, which would continue the services of Hope House to 24, 24 men, so they can remain in the community.
And tell us how this, these 24, is there going to be a counselor on 24/7?
Yes, so there's-
How is this facility going to work?
So the way the facility is designed, there is a 24/7 live-in resident manager. There is, and then there is two case managers. One is a licensed social worker, and the other is a case man, case manager. But they also, what is unique to this particular project is that they have the full services of the Hope House. So in the, in the event that someone has, has an issue because of our full continuum of care, we're able to move the person backwards, as opposed to discharging them to the street.
Is this for all men, all women?
This is a men's program. A dual men.
It's a men's program. Okay. And it's a shared kitchen facilities, et cetera, or how?
It's a community kitchen and a community living space.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
I do. One kitchen for the whole building?
Yes.
And this will be in addition to the living space you guys have at Farnsworth, correct?
Yes.
So this is, they graduate from, they go from downstairs to upstairs, obviously, and then they go, then they go from there to-
So, so we service about 400 men a year. So this is the cream of the crop. So the people that complete the six-month residential treatment, that are really encased in the community, and for them to move out of the community would derail their progress, will go to, will be chosen to go to this facility.
Can I ask, being familiar with Leland Street, has it been any work with Dorchester Bay on that?
Yes, so we have approval, we have support letters from Dorchester Bay, we have from the, Dudley Street Initiative, and from Cottage Brook.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Josh McFadden, we would like to go on record in support. It's our understanding they do have support from the community, including the DSNI. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. Vice Counsel, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Sue Sullivan, New Market Business Association, and I'm speaking in support of Hope House and the work that they do. They have been wonderful neighbors on Farnham Street. They, they, they really maintain a great facility, and to have a, this is, the continuum of care is something that has been so important and missing in a lot of our recovery programs, and just to have a graduate program that they can, that they, they mill-manage well, we are, it would be fully supportive of having them in any neighborhood. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, you know, continue, just to continue to work with the neighbors if there are any issues. But other than that, thank you for your work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 716-137, 76 Allegheny Street. This is to construct a new penthouse bed, expand living space into the basement, and change occupancy from a two-unit building to a three-unit building. The violation's Article 59, Section 7, a three-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 59, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 59, Section 37, the off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 59, Section 8, the height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is James Christopher from RCLC with the Project Architects, with the business address of 415 Ponce de Avon, Dorchester.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Currently, there exists a two-unit building with a, with a front-to-back layout, so one unit is addressing Allegheny Street, and then there's a- So one unit is addressing Allegheny Street and then there's a, an additional residential unit behind that. The proposal is to subdivide the front building to create two units within it. Currently, there are four bedrooms in Unit 1, which is the rear property. There are three, there are four bedrooms in Unit, I'm sorry, three bedrooms in Unit 2 existing. And then the proposal will be to have three bedrooms in Unit 2 and five bedrooms in Unit 3 for a total of 12 bedrooms in the three units. There is no change to the exterior, exterior of the building or the footprint. All of the usable living space will be captured from the interior basement and then the, the attic space. There is also a five-car garage at the rear of the property, accessed off of Cherokee Street with a pedestrian walkway to the three units at the front of the property.
So, speak to the violations, what's required, what's, what's being proposed?
So currently, it's a, it's a 2F 5,000. So the use itself is a violation. There, the FAR is excessive where .6 is required. Our proposed would be .98. The parking is a violation, but we believe that the five cars are sufficient for three units at the rear. And, I'm sorry, the height is 37 feet, which is existing. There's no change there.
So you're proposing a new penthouse bedroom to expect, to construct?
No, it's within the existing living space, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Within, within the existing building.
And is, did I understand correctly, there's one unit with five bedrooms?
Uh, yes. Unit 3 will have a total of five bedrooms when complete, the proposed.
And it's the anticipation that that will be rented out to a family?
Um, if, if the demand is there, as we all know in Mission Hill, there's a lot of student housing in that area, but I could certainly address that with the owner. One of the reasons why we kept the square footage is large because of the parking and the size of the units. We believe that they would be desirable to families or students in the area.
Just a reminder that the owner should know this, but more than four unrelated individuals cannot occupy a unit.
Correct. There's also, if, if, if the unit, if the bedroom count is an issue, Madam Chair, we could certainly convert that into additional living space or, or home and office and, and take a bedroom count down a little bit.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, just a girl at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to go in opposition to this proposal. This particular proposal has gone before the community and there is wide opposition ranging from the Civic Association to Mission Hill Neighborhood Services. And I've got a couple of the residents standing behind me also sharing their concerns, most of it being that Allegheny Street already has many houses owned by the same owner, all filled with students, and they're just concerned that this is gonna be more student housing. And the butters that we did have pretty much represented a lot of the neighboring streets, all in opposition, sharing concerns of just the way that the street is already occupied during the school year and just, they don't wanna see this happening here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the council at large, Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, resident Janine Barry of Allegheny Street. It's a very small dead-end street. It's overly dense already. The developers have basically come in, taken all of the one-family homes. This particular house, they've added an additional building in the old backyard and connected it, somehow got away with it. Now, in addition to that, it's actually two huge houses where there was once one family. And now they just, with no hardship whatsoever, wanna continue adding bedrooms. And so we're strongly opposed to this. There's also a big development going on directly across the street with a home, a little wanderer. We already have traffic jams. It's a nightmare.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Ryan Manganelli, State Representative Jeffrey Sanchez, we would like to go on record to oppose.
Who would be on this proposal?
LaRosa Development.
LaRosa?
Yes.
Was this, was this project before this board, was this addressed before this board previously?
Um, the, I don't, this particular version of the project was not, Madam Chair, I think that originally using, there's, Mr. LaRosa owns several properties in the area and I think this was a part of a, a previous proposed project that was not pursued and finished. So the, the unit that was constructed at the rear of the property was done as of right within the square footage and the setbacks. So, the, the project, as we're discussing it this morning, was not before this board.
I wonder how, how he managed to do that. Anyway, given that information, may, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mr. Mayor, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is Dolan's Court here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Calling BOA 692-756, 2 to 4 Dolan's Court. This is parking for one residential vehicle. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use, and Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking loading requirement. Parking is not allowed. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Bob McKay, to Dolan's Court.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Um, the drive, the, the side parking's been there for a while, so the, the house, if you look at the blueprints, on Amory Street, there's, Dolan Court is, is the side street where the, set the set of stairs are. That's the main entrance to the house. So the drive, the, the parking is actually side parking on the house. So when you look at the pictures, there's no entrance there, and that's a, that goes into a private driveway. So as far as the curb cut, the curb cut is already on Amory. And then it goes into a private cohousing driveway. So the front driveway is level with that roadway.
So this is just on Amory, just by the brewery?
Yeah, so it's, it's directly in between Green Street and Stony Brook, the stations. So, what, you can see the set of stairs and the back of the truck, that's the entrance to the house.
Is this there already?
Yes.
Because I seem to remember, or seem to remember...
It was only about three, four years ago, I started getting tickets. And then you're getting $300 a whack. So then when I called the, the city, it said a six grand built up. And I didn't, I don't know where that came from. It ended up getting dismissed, the, the, the tickets. So I had a meeting at the Farnsworth with the, the neighborhood council zone and they were going along with it. I had no denials on this.
So how many units in this building?
It's two-family.
It's a two-family? What, do I just see one meter on it?
Yeah, the other side's, I, I own it, the other side's not occupied. I just got stored furniture in it.
Okay.
It, it eventually will get done over, but at, at this point, it's not getting done.
Okay. And so, as I'm looking at this picture, it's, this is the driveway to the cohousing?
Yes, that's the, that's the private driveway, where the meter is, yeah.
Okay. And there's no chance of you parking at the rear of the property?
That's for, that's for four Dolans. That's a, this is two-family, so there's, there's already a space back there. So there's one spot for four Dolans Court, there's one spot for two Dolan's Court.
Okay, so since you own the building, that you could, you could park yourself in that rear spot?
I've got, I've got my work truck back there. And there's no, and there's no resident parking, so the T-drivers take up the streets spots.
Because, you know, when we look at projects, all projects here, we are not really looking at it for today. We're looking at for, for the, as far as the long-term impact on the community. Because, you know, that space may be there for the next 50 years or whatever it is. So that's what we have to consider as we look at these cases, okay? So, so that's why we're kind of trying to get clear on what's going on.
How many parking spaces are in the back now?
One. There's one on, there's sides. I shouldn't even say front, they're both side parking.
Looks like there's more than one in the picture that you gave us.
The, which one's that?
This one here? Looks like there's more vehicles parked behind the house.
That's the cohousing parking.
I'm sorry?
Cohousing behind me?
What is that?
And there's, and there's nothing you could work out, you, you couldn't, there's nothing you could work out with them?
That's all full.
Oh, that's all full, okay.
So a quick question. In one of your pictures here, when you pull into the parking area, there's a vehicle to the left-hand side, okay?
That's cohousing parking, too.
All right, so they own this driveway?
It's, it's, yes, it's, it's part of the, so that can get in the back.
Do you have an easement over it?
Yes.
So they own this driveway and they can park this vehicle here? And this is, this is additional front yard parking?
It looks like it's a stored vehicle.
That one is.
Yeah. Yeah. We're looking at Google Maps, in case you're wondering, that shows them. Anyway.
The last, the last picture is the driveway.
Yeah. Mr. Bizani, tell, how are the plans?
Survey plan is adequate. Photographs are more instructive.
Are more instructive, okay. So this is, this is a side entrance, um, you, um, house, okay? And there's nothing that could happen in that rear yard. He's looking to park this vehicle right there. It's now parked there illegally. That's what he's looking to do. In the front yard, but directly about, butting Amory Street.
That's, that's the only house on that block that's facing that way. There was a six and eight that got torn down behind. So all the other houses are facing Amory.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I need the side pocket for two and the side pocket for four.
And there's no possibility on the other side, on, at the rear, to have two parking spaces?
No, because the fence jogs in and I don't get the eight feet that you need, the eight by 20. I, I guess it actually just makes eight feet.
Can I ask a quick question? You know where the stairs are? Is that the front of your house?
Yes.
Where the stairs are?
So, Mr. Bizani, looking at the plot plan?
Yeah, that's...
Is there any possibility of two parking spaces back there?
Well, there would be tandem.
Yeah.
And the problem is... Is, is there easement across the four foot six wide? I'm trying to figure out what that four foot six dimension is. Looking at the plot plan.
All right, say that again?
Looking at the plot plan?
Yeah.
There's a dimension there that goes from the left lot line to the right lot line in that direction, four foot six. I'm trying to determine what that four foot six is.
So the, so the property line goes from 5653, but when the developer built back there, they bumped it out, the fence, so that I get one spot back there. And the, and the reason, it's 1890, I guess, somewhere, that's, that's how old the house is. So I had to get it on the plot plan, because when I originally went to 1010, the guy's like, I can't use this plot plan that they had. It was stamped, but it was just old. And he says that it doesn't say anything on there about parking spaces. So I don't think they did that back then. I mean, now it's updated. So to basically avoid me from getting more tickets, I need to have the front yard in the pocket, I guess, if I'm getting that. I need a permit or...
Well, so, so the question before us is not to solve everything, but to look at that and decide if, because we have a policy to really look carefully at front yard parking and, and to decide whether this is something that we would be supportive of or not. In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm Ellen Tibby. I live at 65 Cornwall Street in Jamaica Plainfield, directly abut Scott McKay and live in the cohousing that people were mentioning, a 30-unit condominium. And we are in complete support of, of Mr. McKay's appeal. It's clear, it's totally evident, that the place that is in, in question is not even a yard, it's a side strip. It doesn't constitute a yard if there were no car parked there. And that his front is, is not on Amory Street. It seems like a reasonable arrangement for, for a person whose, whose actual plot is mainly taken up by the house itself.
We're just questioning the, the entrance to your, to your building, to the condo building?
Mm-hmm.
And we noticed a dumpster. Is there possibility for, for Mr. McKay to get some parking over there?
No, the dumpster takes up, it, the place for the dumpster is, is filled by the dumpster. And then there, the other parking units, the parking spaces, one and a half space per 30 units is, the, the other units, the other parking spaces, sorry, are just very precious. There's no, there's no extra space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak?
I was very much in support of his appeal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
I'd like to speak in favor of Scott's proposal. Howard Katz, 65 Cornwall Street, number 209, also a neighbor of Scott. Could I give a very, very brief context?
When, when was the cohousing put in place?
Um, we opened Memorial Day, 2005.
Okay, so that, that proposal came to, to this board for its approval, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for your, for your, for your comments. Thank you.
And can I add?
In the meantime, I think we need to just focus on what we need to do here.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
Where did you park before they had the cohousing?
I parked in that driveway. So there used to be a junkyard that went around there, a wheel scrapyard, and then that got sold up and then they did the development. It was a, between my grandmother and the owner, they said we could use that and we've used it for 50 years. And then it kinda went to cohousing, they went.
And you can't fit alongside your house in that driveway to let people pass?
No.
Because we have a big, we have a ma, you know, I, I can just tell you that front yard parking, for me, is a non-starter, like...
If, if I may, Mr. Yellen, I do think there's an architectural solution to this.
Thank you.
Okay, so may...
The address is actually on Dolan Court. That's the address of the house. Therefore, the space on Amory Street is silent. The problem is, it's the visual disconnect, okay? And the reason there's a visual disconnect is you have a chain link fence there that clearly shows the object. If that was, working with the BRA, BPDA, sorry, and one came up with a semi-transparent screen that would look like a front, a front, front yard fence, and had a height that would probably have to be five feet, which, which can be done, and the car would be back there and...
So, Mr. Bizani, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
So what you have to do is get together with the BPDA and I'm sure they'll work out a very nice screen plan.
So there was a motion for approval with design review, okay?
Calling a next case, calling BOA 765-621, 422 Seaver Street. This is to construct a new rear addition and new dormer to an existing two-family residential. Violation is Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Elia Sioum and my address is 422 Seaver Street.
So please tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, what, what's proposed is to build a rear addition and new dormer.
Okay, so tell us what's there now?
Pardon?
Tell us what's there now?
Oh, this is a two, two-family unit, but with one bedroom in the first floor and two bedroom in the second floor. It's a very, very, very small house and I have two, a boy and a girl, you know, children, and I don't have enough room, you know, for them to sleep. And right now, they are sleeping with me in the same bedroom with my wife, one of them.
So tell us what the dormer is going to do what? You're gonna propose to have additional bedrooms in the dormer?
Yes. The, the rear addition will have one room to the first floor and one room to the second floor. And the dormer will have two rooms to, to the second floor. And the dormer will have two rooms to, to the second floor, but because I'm building, uh, a new state, then I'm losing one of the, the existing bedroom. So, all, all in all, I will have, like, three bedrooms in the second floor and, uh, uh, two bedroom in the first floor.
So two bedrooms in the first unit and, um, three bedrooms in the second unit?
That's what it's gonna be, yeah. But right now, I have only three bedrooms in the whole house. Two, one is not, one is not a bedroom. It's just like an office, ten by ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
And, uh, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Can I just ask one quick question? Is the, is the dormer gonna be about the same height as the house next?
Yeah, the same, yeah. It's already an a- there is already an attic, but it's just converting it into a dormer. There is already an attic there.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavia De Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jawan Skeen's Neighborhood Liaison to District Four City Council President Andrea Campbell's office, and we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? And just for the record, the side and rear yard, the side yard violation is an existing violation. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with P P D A Design Review. Jeff, in particular, um, the extent of the dormer is coming too close to the front wall to build a residential complex.
Is there a second? Uh, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So you're approved with that proviso, okay? And you'll get something from this young man here.
Calling B O A seven-four-eight-eight-two-zero-fifty-four E Street. There's a companion case, B O A seven-four-eight-eight-one-five-fifty-six E Street. This is for fifty-four, revised basement plan to extend living space into unit one. Violation of Article sixty-five, Section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. This is for fifty-sixth E Street. This is a revised basement plan to extend living space into unit one. Violation of Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Schreier. I'm an attorney with an office at one zero zero five Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. With me is Adam Dong, who's the owner of fifty-four, sorry, fifty-six. I always get confused. These houses are attached in the middle, and they are two, essentially two-three family houses. They've been completely rebuilt from, uh, they were fairly deplorable houses in very poor condition for many years. Uh, they were residential houses, had been converted to a church use and a daycare center. We were before this board to convert them back to residential use. During the construction phase, uh, Mr. Dong owns a three-family home, and Mr. Nguyen owns a three-family home attached in the middle. The hu- houses have been completely rebuilt. The outside is very attractive. There's parking in the rear. The issue became, as they were building them, the units are, uh, two-bedroom units, so each building has three two-bedroom units. The first floor, he would like to extend into the basement. What they-
So, so tell us what that unit will look like.
Okay, essentially, it'll still be a two-bedroom unit on the first floor with a family room in the basement. They're using about a hundred and sixty square feet in the basement to make one additional room. That room will have, they will move the laundry down to the basement, and there'll also be a half bath, not a full bath, in the basement.
What's the floor-to-ceiling height there?
Seven, seven feet.
Seven feet?
Right.
Okay, um, for the record, um-
Yeah, I need to review myself.
So, it's seven feet, it's a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty square feet for each, uh, for each unit?
Right.
Um, where are the utilities?
Uh, the utilities are in, there are utilities in the basement, but they're in a separate area. This is not the whole basement. This is a, a small area. And they'll be building an interior unit staircase down. So, in effect, they're not really increasing their square footage that much, because they're gonna lose thirty-six square feet on the first floor for the staircase. There'll be about thirty-six square feet that'll be used for the staircase down in the basement, so you're gonna lose, um, a substantial area. So, increasing the floor area ratio probably about, um, less than, less than, uh, a tenth of a percent. And the in- increased square footage ultimately is about a hundred and thirty square feet. Just a nice play area for families with children.
Okay, so, um, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate. There's clearly a independent stair that goes from the rear of the kitchen, if you go down to the family hall.
Well, that's fifty-six.
Is that, is that, is this a remnant of a, of a pull-down grate door that we see on fifty-four? Or is this prior to being-
That must be a very old picture. This is a beautiful, essentially, it looks like a new three-family house, attached in the middle, two-three family house. Is it gray? Is it gray with white trim?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on the, on, on this fifty-four side, we, it looks like there's, you know, one of those pull-down grates, the whole, uh-
Can, can we see, if we, I can't, I can't answer. May I come up or?
In the meantime, uh, why, why don't you approach? In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of? Mr. Bazani, I ask you how the plans are.
That's fifty-four, that's fifty-six.
Is it, is anybody here to speak in support of, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavia De Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Amanda Carley, Councilor Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the picture that-
Hold on. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, go on the record.
Uh, on the record, that picture that you're seeing is when this was a daycare center. That was to keep the children from wandering out into the street. That is long since gone.
Okay.
That, that's a driveway now, open driveway.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Good luck.
And this is for both units?
Both.
Thank you very kindly.
Calling a next case, calling B O A seven-three-six-nine-two-three, forty-one to forty-three BS Avenue. This is to add a five-foot by twenty-six-foot porch with shed roof overhang, a four-inch slab with a five-foot by eight-foot attached storage shed on the rear of the house. The shed roof and storage is off the back of the basement level. No living space is being added, and porch does not block windows or doors. Violation of Article nine, Section one, the building is a two-family dwelling in a one F five thousand district. The covered porch is an extension of a non-conforming building. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Fudding, a contractor to the owner, Michael Lee, forty-one, forty-three BS F.
Who is the owner, please?
Michael Lee.
Okay, and tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, we're proposing to add a roof on the rear of the house, five-foot by twenty-six-foot, with a, a four-inch slab, concrete slab, and a five-foot by eight-foot, uh, attached shed.
Okay.
So it's enclosed, it's an enclosed structure.
So, I, um, Mr. Bazani, can you explain what this attached shed is?
Yes, uh, basically, if you take the rear of the house, that's, uh, twenty-four feet wide, and run a deck all, or, concrete post, uh, a deck all the way across, the open part of the deck would be eighteen feet, sixteen feet, and to the, further the end of the deck is a shed that is accessible from the yard side.
Okay, and so how are the plans?
They're adequate. They're, it's fine. I mean, it's pretty good.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Uh, we held an onsite abutters meeting. Uh, all the abutters who attended expressed their full support for the project. The proponents also have the support of the Lower Mill Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Amanda Carley, Councilor Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling B O A seven-five-five-one-eight-zero-one-fifty-six West Selden Street. This is a new two-family home. The violation of Article sixty, Section eight, two-family dwelling use is a forbidden use. Article sixty, Section forty, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the lot size to erect a new dwelling is insufficient. Article sixty, lot width to erect a new dwelling is insufficient. Article sixty, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty, floor-to-air ratio is insuff- insufficient. Article sixty, a height requirement in excessi- is excessive. Two and a half stories is the maximum allowed. Article sixty, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the side yard requirement is insufficient. And Article sixty, Section nine, the rear yard requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David De Plessy. Uh, address is, uh, one fifty-six West Selden Street.
And these look like a lot of violations. Tell us what's being proposed, because this is a one-family, six thousand square feet lot, uh, zoning district?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, tell us what you're proposing.
So currently, um, we own the property with a total square footage of, of just under eleven thousand square feet. We've owned the property since nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, parents owned it. My brother and I, uh, bought it from our parents, uh, three years ago. Um, it is a subdivided lot, so we currently have a house on, on one lot and a second lot, which is where we're, we're proposing to build a second home.
So tell us the size of this lot.
This lot in question is about, uh, four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight square feet.
Okay.
And per the zoning, it's, uh, it's, the area is zoned for six thousand.
So, did the subdivision come to this board?
No, the subdivision was already. That's how we purchased it. It was, it's been subdivided for however long, so I'm not sure which one it was.
Okay, so you're proposing a two-family, and this is zone one family, and this is a, a smaller lot. I think that's what's triggering all these violations. Now, what's hard for us is to approve new projects without parking, because you're, are you proposing any parking?
Yes, so we have an existing driveway, um, that can fit four vehicles, and in the front of the house, between the current, current house we live in and this new lot, there's about four, um, spaces.
Is this project before this board before?
Never.
No? No, it's, okay. Okay, so there's a lot of violations. Tell us about the height of the building that you're proposing.
Um, the height and everything's gonna be to the, it's gonna be the same as the existing house that, that we currently have on the lot, so, um, it's same, same feet, um.
So, so we don't know the house as well as you do? Tell us what the height is.
The heights...
Mr. Bazani, can you help in any way?
Well, the drawings are undimentioned, uh, in terms of the elevations, but I would suggest that it's within the thirty-five percent.
Okay.
Because again, the height of a roof, pitch roof, is not to the gable. It's the mean between the gable and the eave.
Okay, and tell us where the parking is?
There, there is one space in front of the house, and then we have an existing driveway that we can fit about two vehicles.
Okay.
Could, could you go over that again, because I do not see anything that shows the parking.
The, on the plan that you're looking at, it says existing current driveway.
Right.
That would, that, that driveway itself holds about four cars.
That's wide enough to park a car and have the other cars go by it?
Yes.
And is it a shared driveway? Or is it shared with the yellow house?
No.
I mean-
No, that's just, that's just our driveway.
No, to answer Mr. Ehrlich's question, the driveway is only twelve foot six inches wide from property line to edge of house.
Yeah.
You can't have a car parked there and another one going by it. You would need sixteen feet, seventeen feet, you know? So how do, so now, how many spaces are you proposing, just for this?
Um, we were initially proposing one.
Just one?
But if more is needed, I'm not sure what, you know, what you require.
Well, why can't you pull the car all the way in, in, just park it in your rear yard?
We can't, so, because we, we have yards based in-
And that would still allow you access to drive in to get to my other garage.
Correct.
And tell us, I'm sorry, tell us about the units. How, what's the size? How many bed- bedrooms?
The first floor would be three units. Second floor is where I would currently stay in, um, would be four units.
So, three bedrooms on the first floor?
Yes.
And, and what's the size of, and would, would, uh, the, the, the lower floor, unit one, would, uh, you'd be using the basement?
Yes.
As living space?
No, not as living space.
Not as living place, okay, so three beds, okay. And the plans indicate that, Mr. Bazani?
The plans do indicate that there's direct access off the first floor unit down into the basement.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Whitney Celestin with the Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to support this project. We've had two abutters meetings, including one with the West Southern Association. Um, the abutters did have some worries about the size of the dormer, but the owner did, um, adhere to the plans, you know, to meet that requirement. And also the parking, we did discuss that in meetings, and they did tell us that there would be parking in the back of the, um, home, as you just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Appwhite, Council McCarthy's office. Um, I'd like to echo the sentiment of the Mayor's office, and also, um, uh, you know, they, the property owner has owned the property since, I believe, the mid-eighties. And the West Selden group was encouraged by the fact that the property that they're trying to build will be for the brother, so it, it, the family is going to remain on the property. They're not gonna rent it out, so.
Thank you.
We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jawan Skeen's representing District Four City Council President Andrea Campbell's office. We would like to go on record of support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Just a question. Is this a modular house?
Um, it was initially going to be, but because our side of the street has the power lines, it be, cannot fit a crane, so it's gonna be a stick-built.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with, uh, B P D A Design Review.
And, and that would be also to look at the parking, Jeff?
Yeah. To ensure that it's in the rear.
In the rear, yep.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Is Milton Ab here?
Hold on. Okay, next case?
They're calling, uh, next case, B O A seven-six-three-zero-three-one-one-oh-one Milton Avenue. Are they gonna defer? John?
Okay, um-
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is based on representation from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The date, please?
Uh, March sixth.
Okay.
Calling a next case, calling B O A seven-four-nine-zero-eight-two-nineteen Rare Cheshire Street. This is to erect a new two-car garage. Violation of Article fifty-five, Section forty-one, accessory buildings in the side or rear yard. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the maximum percentage of rear yard covered by the accessory building. And Article fifty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Johnson, eight forty Summer Street, with three oh five B in Boston. I'm the owner of nineteen Cheshire Street. Um, I'm here seeking relief to build a two-car garage. The existing house that you see on the rendering, um, I'm in the process of renovating. That was a, as a matter of rights project. Um, the two camp for the, uh, two-car garage, um, primarily, we're here because of dimensional violations. Um, Article fifty-five, Section forty-one requires an accessory building to sit sixty-five feet from the front lot line. We only have about sixty feet, um, so we're just challenged by the depth of our lot. Um, the neighbors are in support of-
What are the other two requirements? The other two violations?
Oh, the other two requirements are, um, Article fifty-five, Section nine, uh, states that the structure, the accessory structure can't take up more than twenty-five percent of the rear yard. We're just over that twenty-five percent, or like twenty-four percent. And then, I believe, Article fifty-five, Section nine, side yard insufficient. I believe that may have been an erroneous violation. Four feet is required, and we have four point five.
So it looks like you have, what's the, what's the occupancy of the building?
It's a two-family dwelling, two three-bedroom units.
So, and you're proposing four parking spaces, because I see the proposed garage and then proposed parking, two proposed parking spaces in the driveway?
Correct, so we would be, uh, keeping two cars in the garage and then two cars in the driveway.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate. Um, a question. What's the apartment age of the building?
Of the existing building?
Yeah, the house.
Um, the existing building's probably about a nineteen-hundred house. It's being completely, uh, full-gut rehabbed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what, what's there now? It's just a driveway and an op- an open driveway with no garage?
Yeah, it's just an existing driveway, no garage.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the zone really impressive with the call of proviso. This is a very nice nineteen-hundred building. The garage is in nineteen fifty, okay? So, BPDA should take a look at developing a garage that is contextually as nice as the house is.
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
It's now twelve ten. I'm going to call the eleven-thirties for deferrals or withdrawals. Anything for eleven-thirty for deferral or withdrawal? Address, sir?
Sixteen Nixon, sir.
Can we call it in for the record?
My name is Andy Dwan for sixteen...
Hold on a second, sir.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
For the record, calling BOA six-six-nine-five-two-three-sixteen Nixon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Andy Dwan for sixteen Nixon Street.
What you're requesting?
For deferral, ma'am.
So, you were deferred once?
Yes.
And what's the likelihood you'll have conclusion after this one?
Neighborhood meeting, ma'am.
When is that scheduled for?
That'd be on the eighteen of this month.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
February thirteenth.
Okay, so you're February thirteenth?
Thank you.
February thirteenth. Counselor, address?
Twenty-nine Commonwealth Avenue, requesting withdrawal, please.
Okay, for the record...
We were hoping about that.
For the record, calling BOA seven-three-three-eight-four-one-twenty-nine Commonwealth Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Ross, representing Twenty-nine Hexagon LLC. I'm an attorney at Prince Lobel.
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
Four oh two Warren Street, Roxbury.
For the record, calling BOA seven-four-four-three-seven-nine-four oh two Warren Street. Name and address for the record.
Jimmy McNeil, Twenty-three Short Street, East Walpole.
What are you requesting, sir?
The withdrawal.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, sir. It's been...
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for eleven-thirty? Bearing that, we'll go back to the ten-thirty cases. Calling BOA seven-four-nine-four-zero-eight-fifty Eldridge Road. This is to modify and enlarge an existing third-floor dormer and construct a new bathroom on the third floor. The violation, Article nine, section one, is extension of non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Hayes, fifty Eldridge Road.
Tell us, is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family, and tell us what's being proposed?
We want -- we have a -- we live on the second and third floor. My mother-in-law lives on the first floor. We have one bathroom in our unit on the second floor, and the bedrooms are on the third floor. We'd like to build a third-floor bathroom.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Ron, your record.
Any questions on the board?
Go ahead.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
There are two letters of support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe Dunham, City Council, Madam Ellison's office. The council would like to go on the record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. This is Council General Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Sorry for keeping you waiting so long for such a small project.
Madam Chair, I have to go back to the eleven-thirty rediscussions, because I didn't call one to the record. There was a companion case, so I'm going to call that back. BOA seven-four-four-three-seven-eight-four oh two Warren Street. I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, one other case, Madam Chair, that the council just gave me. The first case, BOA six-nine-eight-nine-zero-six-nine Chelsea Street is deferring, so we need to get a date for them. I make a motion for deferral?
Second.
All those in favor? And is there a reason?
So, we'll do March twenty-seventh.
Did they give a reason for this deferral?
I don't know, councilor, they'd have to...
Okay. Okay, so...
An adjacent piece of property.
Okay. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have a date of three-twenty-seven.
Excellent.
Now, we'll go back to the ten-thirty cases. Calling BOA seven-seven-two-six-five-eight-five-ninety-nine Cambridge Street. This is the redevelopment of a mixed-use property, two commercial and two residential, modifying an existing Victorian by adding four townhouses and eliminating two commercial spaces from the next phase studios for a total of six residential units. Is Cambridge Street here?
Uh, yes.
Okay. This is our violation, Article ten, section one, the proposed parking is within five feet of the side yard. Article fifty-one, section eight, the MFR use is forbidden in a one-F three-thousand sub-district. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Rick Ames, next phase studios, Wilson Street, Boston.
My name is Michael McCormick. I'm a client with the Morris, McCormick Studio, offices at one hundred Cambridge Street. To my right is Dave Suwes. We will be part of the presentation. One of the three aims is the architect, owner-applicant, Ali Kemi is here. The business that was on the site was tough, touch industry, they've upgrown the site and are looking to relocate, hopefully, in the Allston community. As you may recall, we were here in May with a project, which the neighborhood, the abutters did not feel comfortable with. Asked us to go back and redesign it, which we have done. We saved the Victorian building that is on the site and reduced the number of units from fourteen to two of the Victorian and four additional units for a total of six. With that, I'd like to turn the -- turn the project over to -- I will add that the abutters and the neighbors, the community groups, have shown support for the new plan. They're here today. With that, I'll turn it over to Rick Ames, who is the architect. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. You have basically a small set of whatever we have up here, which may be more expedient for you, so I'm not going to go through a lot of antics to try to shuffle stuff through.
Yes, go directly to describing the project briefly and then talking about the violations of this project.
Okay. Yes, the three violations, there are three violations for the project. They are for height, which the existing house is also none, is above, and we'll show it to you from the side. Rear yard, we are extending further into the rear yard. And FAR, which is, we're proposing one point one-eight, which is above the allowable. This is a historic...
What is the allow?
Point six.
Go ahead.
This is a single-family, one, a six-thousand zone. It's sort of a little bit of an anomaly along Cambridge Street. The existing current use is two commercial units. There's a dentistry, medical office units, and two residential units in the existing Victorian. We're proposing, as we've said, we're going to keep the existing house, and we're going to put four townhouses on the back of it, which are commensurate in style. Those are going to be true townhouse styles. They each have two parking under. We're going to step the townhouses down so that we're actually behind the house as we go away from it. So, the layout of the buildings are really very clearly family units. They are basically living, dining, and then four bedrooms above. And the existing Victorian house will be converted to two units, of which have surface parking outside. One of the violations is that there is parking along the side that extends into the five-yard foot setback. If you look at the existing site plan, there is parking all along that side existing already. And most of that, we're actually, we're buffering with a small garden area, but we want to keep two, the two spots for the existing house up front, and we want to keep one that's very readily accessible from a handicap perspective. So, there's one on each side of the drive.
I'm sorry, so the residents on Saunders Street, in their rear yards, they will see the front doors essentially of the units?
Correct.
And on the adjacent property, they will see the garage doors?
Yes.
Double doors, okay?
And if you look, if you look at here in the site plan, this is the adjacent yard. This is Saint Joseph School. So, it's a very large institutional, which the former proposal had sort of referenced in this one, which very clearly trying to reference the Saint Joseph. Neighborhood Victorian era. So, the intent is to extend the existing language. As I think Michael pointed out, the sisters originally had some concerns on the proposed project, as did some of the civic associations. I think keeping the house and changing the density has really helped quite a bit. Hakimi family, the dentists have been there for quite a while. They've raised their families and, you know, but I think that everyone's in tune with what, the fact that keeping the house is very important to people. And that's what's been proposed.
So, the FAR is required as six. You're proposing one point one-eight. The use is forbidden because it's a single-family zone. A limitation of parking area, that was because it was within five feet of the side yard.
And that's one space only?
That's one space. And what's the rear yard?
The rear yard violation is we're within ten feet, and it's a thirty-yards setback. That's the larger one.
And what are the, what's the, tell us about the units? One-bedroom, two-bedroom?
No, they're four-bedroom. They're really, I can, there's individual plans, which are probably easier than me walking through the boards, but it's basically a garage under, living, dining, kitchen on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor, a bedroom and a half on the third floor. You know, I guess you'd call it bedroom plus.
About how many square feet?
Excuse me?
How many square feet?
Units are about two thousand square foot each. They're really, I think there's a commitment from everybody involved that they're family-oriented units. They're larger units.
Are they for sale or rental?
They're for sale, and they're committed to that.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Ron, your record.
Any questions on the board?
What is currently behind the Victorian?
Parking for the...
Just...
Parking for the dentistry. The actual parking load is better than the existing requirement, and the traffic will go down with the proposal.
And the roofline that continues to the houses is consistent from the existing roofline?
We actually stepped down, because there's some grade change. You can't see it in this, but it...
So, in terms of the height violation, it's, it's, the existing is...
If you, from prescribed grade, we're probably consistent or less.
And you have a handicapped unit?
Excuse me?
Do you have a handicapped unit?
We have just the front one in the first, in the front building.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Warren Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The original plans were met with a lot of feedback, and they came back to the community, and there was a support at the abutters meeting. There was a letter of opposition that's been submitted to you, but overall, the majority were in support. We'd like to go, Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Blanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciomo, also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Allston Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidoro, representing the Allston Civic Association, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? You just brought my attention, so this, this little, this little white car that you're proposing here, that's been, that you're showing in your rendering, that's what's causing that violation?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there an additional spot beside that, beside the house?
There's one on either side in the site plan in your packet. You can see it, yes.
Yes.
The one next to the house is being designated as the handicap, so they don't have to cross the driveway or anything. And we actually have met with the BPDA, I mean, BR, BRA, and I've had one design review with them as well.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved, BPDA's under this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you for your time.
On the next three cases, calling BOA seven-seven-three-three-seven-six-seven Sparhawk Street. Next case, BOA seven-eight-two-three-three-six-nine Sparhawk Street. And BOA seven-seven-three-four-zero-one-seven-A and seven-B Sparhawk Street. This is for seven Sparhawk Street. This is confirm occupancy as an existing two-family dwelling on fifteen thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet, and combine seven Sparhawk with nine Sparhawk to be known as seven-nine Street, seven-nine Sparhawk Street, to be a total of four apartments. The violation, Article fifty-one, section nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking loading is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven, two or more, two or more dwellings on the same lot. And Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use. This is for nine Sparhawk. It's confirm occupancy as a two-family dwelling on fifteen thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet, and combine seven Sparhawk and nine Sparhawk to be known as seven and nine, and to be a total of four apartments. The violation, Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven, two or more dwellings located on the same lot. And Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use. And this is seven-A, seven-B Sparhawk, erected new two-family dwelling built in the rear of an existing four-family dwelling on existing fifteen thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet. This will be one in two dwellings located on the sum, one of two dwellings located on the same lot. The violation, Article fifty-one, section nine, FAR is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article fifty-one, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 51, Section 57, conformity with an existing building alignment. And Article 51, Section 57, two or more dwellings located on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransio, an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Darkanion Brown of Embark Architects, the project architect. Madam Chair, members, this is for, this application is to consolidate into one lot, two lots, on each of which there is a semi-attached two-family dwelling. Consolidation of the lot would then result in a change of occupancy of these two, two-F buildings into a single four-family dwelling. No change in the number of units there, but by simply consolidating the lots and changing this from two-twos to one-four family, we incur the, the use violation. The only change to the existing building is actually a reduction in its footprint. There is a non-historical rear addition that was put on the building at some point, which would be removed as part of this application, reducing the footprint of the existing building by approximately 600 square feet, and increasing the separation distance, or resulting in a separation distance between the existing building, the rear-facing wall, and the, the new proposed two-story townhouse-style buildings to just over 28 feet. This was deferred in order to allow for the perfection of the record with respect to the advertised refusal letters. When I deferred this matter, it had been advertised, properly advertised, as 7 and 7A Sparhawk Street. There was a refusal letter that did not issue until days before the hearing, which was for 9 Sparhawk, which was simply pertaining to the consolidation of that lot with 7. Nonetheless, in order to perfect the record and hear these all at the same time, we deferred to allow it to be re-advertised, which it was.
So these, these units, these existing units, let's just start there. How, how, what are their sizes and...
So Madam Chair, the, on the first floor, the floor three units are one-bedroom units at 972 square feet each. And then the upper duplex units on each side, 7 and 9, are each 1,884 square feet, three-bedroom units.
That's, that's four bed, so that is, okay.
It's...
So it's eight bedrooms in, in that main building?
Correct.
And are these condos, or what are they?
I don't, I'm not sure what, what our client's intention is at this point, whether to hold or sell the condo units. I think they're condominiums for sale.
Okay. And I'm looking at this existing home, and it looks like there is front yard parking as I, as we look straight at the building. Is that true?
Correct. Correct. So, so we've included two packets. The first packet is what we took to the community, just to show the greater context and our proposed building, which is the last two sheets, just showing the existing and proposed. On the left side, there is an existing parking space that we are looking to keep, keep as-is.
So you're looking to maintain, because I'm not sure that front yard parking proposal had ever appeared before this board?
I believe it's side yard. It's not in front of the building. That, that's a side yard, I, I, I believe. It's, it's to the left of the building.
Okay.
It is existing, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I haven't looked through to see if it was ever legalized as such, but it exists elsewhere on the street, looking at Cheeto 2. You can see it up, occurring also at 3, or between 3 and 5 Sparhawk. And again, I would characterize that as a side yard driveway rather than a front yard because it is not parking in front of a building.
And so tell us about this garage, it looks like it was maybe four-car garage in the rear. What are, what's proposed to be happening?
It's a substantially debilitated garage, a rear-outlying building on 9 Sparhawk Street. When this was deferred the first time, the board recalled, I think, 11 Sparhawk, which is to the right, which was a similar case, it was before this board in 2011. And that was for the erection of a new building to the rear. This is a conversion of, actually, it is a new building, but there is an existing building there that can't be preserved.
So you're, you're holding on to the footprint? Are you holding on to it?
No, it'll be, it'll be a little bit larger. The, the, the new building will be approximately 350, 400 square feet larger.
Correct. The, the rear and side yard dimensions of the existing garage will be maintained for the new townhouses.
So give us the information about the townhouses.
Correct. So the townhouses are, sorry, grab the number. So two townhouses, they're both two-bedroom units, and they're 1,395 square feet. Part of the parking for the site is at the first floor, which we have four indoor parking spaces.
So, please repeat that again, so there'll be four parking spaces?
So there's a total of six parking spaces on the site, four within the new building at the rear, and then one on the rear of the building to the left of the extended driveway, and then the one in the front that we're looking to preserve.
And as I look at the site plan on 01, is that, tell me where those, that former garage was that was converted to another unit?
So if you're looking...
When I look at the, at the aerial?
It's actually the building to the, so if you're looking, Madam Chair, our, our building is here?
Yeah.
This project underwent the same, may have been...
Direct the board's attention, if you look at the proposed plot plan, which is, and I think the second set of plans, not the community handouts, the footprint of the existing building is on the site plan with the, the footprint of the new building overlaid.
I'm asking about 11.
Yep, and so, Madam Chair, the, the building 11 is here to the, if you're looking at our building, there's a dot showing where ours is, next door to, if you're facing it to the left, is the number 11 that underwent the same.
And I'm pretty sure I posed that when that came through the first time around. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, let me go back to this issue of the side parking, not of the townhouses for the main building. If you look at ground floor plans 04, this grant to you had said that there were side parking, but it shows the existing driveway on both the existing and the proposed, stopping evenly with the front of the house. Is that true?
Yes, the parking right now, Mr. Ehrlich, is, occurs here.
No, that, yes, that's...
In, in that space.
No, I mean, I would consider that front yard parking.
Front yard is actually defined as that portion of the yard, which lies between the front of the building and the street.
Is there any reason why that driveway couldn't be extended, so at least they would get, so they would, so they would be, in the back of their vehicle be in line with the front of the house?
Yeah, it would further diminish open space. We have an open space insufficiency violation cited, so it could be done.
I think you could also reduce saying that, maybe.
In, in, I'll, I'll look at that.
I mean, I mean, my point is, is this visual thing, regardless of the technical definition...
No, I think we'd be fine to extend the driveway.
If you look at the previous page of site photo 03, you see two cars, and they're kind of in the front there.
Right. No, we'd be fine to extend the driveway back.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Warner Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Palanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciammo, also like to go in record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support. We look forward to seeing this house restored to its historic standard, as the owner said he would, and to build new, family-friendly housing.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the record, I'm going on the record in opposition about two families, two buildings of the same lot.
Thank you. Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 762-119-31 Caldwell Street. This is to add dormers to an attic of an existing building. The violation is Article 50, violation is Article 51, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, number of stories is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Akiva Posey, 31 Caldwell Avenue.
So please tell us what you're proposing?
Proposing to extend, put dormers onto my attic and use it now as living space. I currently have a three-bedroom, I have a two-family house. I rent out the bottom floor to, the first floor to tenants. I live with my family of 10 on the, on the second floor, which has currently three bedrooms and one bathroom. I'm cur, I'm looking to extend the living space to build the attic, to put dormers on the attic, and to finish the attic. That way I'll have more living space for my family.
So in the attic, what are you proposing?
I believe...
Additional bedrooms?
Additional bedrooms and...
How many?
Four additional bedrooms, two large, two small, and, and two bathrooms.
Two bathrooms in the attic?
Yes.
And so the first floor is already an existing three-bedroom unit?
Yes.
Okay. So your, so your front and side yards are existing violations. So what's this going to do to your FAR?
It's, I believe it, it's going to, I'm over FAR, so you know, are you asking how much more I'm going to be over FAR? Well, my contractor told me that the, the total area is going to be a 1,200-square-foot extension.
Okay. What are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Warner Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a Butters meeting, it was overwhelmingly in support, his neighbors all came out, and we'd like to go in record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Palanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciammo, also like to go in record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin improvement Association, we'd like to go in record in support. We're really happy that they will stay in the neighborhood, and we're allowing them to have larger living space. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA Design Review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Is Chamberlain Street here? Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion, it's now 12:40, make a deno, make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, how do you want me to handle the next case here?
On the next case, there is a rediscussion. Is, what, what, there is nobody in the room for this rediscussion. Is anybody here for 874 East Sixth Street?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I recuse myself from this.
Let me call it in for the record.
And, okay.
Going to call it in for the record for rediscussion, calling BOA 719-810-874-EAST-SIXTHSTREET.
Madam Chair?
With, with charge now, till further day.
So, may I have the attorneys at the table? I know, this is, so, we are, at this point, going to just withdraw this case and pull it up whenever, at the call of the chair, at a future date, once we have more detailed information that, that we need to understand the, the issues.
Mr., I'm sorry, my name is Attorney Jonathan Friedman, representing the applicant. Attorney David Suarez had told us that it was going to be discussed today, I don't know...
No, this is, this is basically something, and please, first of all, George, put your name and address on the record.
Yes, George Maransio, an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston, also representing the applicant.
Okay. What we're proposing to do is, we still have some work to do on our end as a board, so, just to understand some of the background. And so therefore, I'm proposing that this be withdrawn for today, and we will pull it up and, and inform you at, at a, at a future date when we, we will hear the details of this. Okay?
Is there, is there any information that we can provide you with that would be helpful to the board today?
No, no, but we will get in touch with you once we've gone through the record to see if there's anything we need to perfect it. Okay? So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to withdraw.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and thank you so much.
I'm sorry, what was the motion vote?
To withdraw it, and we will pull it up at the call of the chair. Okay?
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.